Okay, we call the meeting to a lot of this is a budget discussion. To pick up where we left off from Tuesday's meeting. The administration has gone through, reviewed the budget. I've met with them as well in the course of it and Mr. Suda will report out the changes that have been made and where we stand with the budget at this point. Gary?
Okay, so I, everybody should have a packet, paper clipped together. I would put that in the front of your book and don't look at the old stuff. And conveniently, it's all sequentially numbered by page tonight, so we don't have to worry about what colored section we're looking at. So basically, we went back through the budget and tried to identify line items within the budget, had some room for, that we could cut. And so we did that. And if you go to, if you go to page three in this report, it's a summary of the budget, then you'll see, the first column to the left says 2017 preliminary, so that was the budget that we presented the other night. So it was an operating budget of $25,292,148. We went through those lines and we were able to reduce $204,060 out of those lines. And you can see the sections that they fall into, the largest number being in district-wide, and then 18,500 at Wire Village, 7,300 at Knox Trail, and so on down the line. So if you want, we can go through what those cuts were. And if you go to the next page, page four, it's the same sort of format, so we've got by line item, and we can see that the budget to the, the furthest column to the left is what was presented, and the revised column is what we're presenting tonight. So you can see in the first one is superintendent contracted services. Included in that number was $47,000 budgeted for the fiscal overseer. And in the past, we've never really paid more than $35,000, so I reduced that by $9,300. Supplies and materials, same thing, there were, we looked at what we needed and what was spent in the past, and there seemed to be room to move there. Same with memberships and dues. Clerical salaries under the business, same thing, there was some, we have a new employee, so we lost some longevity, so we reduced some numbers there. And the contracted services, $5,200, we took out some money that we were planning to use for some computer training, but we think we still have enough to handle the needs in the upcoming year. District technology coordinator, that's not just the coordinator, that's all the employees except for the secretary, except for the information officer. So there's, there was $14,000 in that budget for summer help. We reduced that by $4,000. And we replaced an employee last year with a lesser employee, and so we took the other $10,000 from that line, and there's still sufficient money to pay all the employees that are there. Contracted services actually went up. Some information came forward that we needed to re-up on some software that wasn't budgeted, so we added that in. Same thing with supplies, I went back and looked, and they've never really spent more than $10,000 in that line, and even that was a high year, so we feel that 8,500 is a fair number for that. District computer hardware, there were some items that were budgeted in the original $195,000 that we believe we can take care of in the current fiscal year's budget that will help us meet our net school spending requirements, so we moved the $45,000 into the current year, and were able to reduce what was being requested for the next year. Professional development meetings and conferences, that doesn't, hardly ever gets touched. If you look back, you can see in 2015, we spent $10,000, and then $30,000 in '14, and that was actually a high year, so we felt that that cut was, we could sustain that cut. Same thing, district guidance testing supplies, you can see in 2015, nothing was spent from that line, so we reduced it from $20,000 to $10,000. The next page, district truck and travel, after getting the, the new truck, I think we can, we can reduce that expense line by $4,500, the repairs shouldn't be so bad. And I think that's sustainable, and that's still in line with what we've had in the past. Same thing, district maintenance of equipment, we had actually increased that line by $5,000, but in light of the exercise we're going through, I think we can keep it at 10, and sustain what we need to and maintain what we need to for now. Employee opt-out insurance payments, again, that's an amount, it's kind of, it's kind of a guess until we have open enrollment, who's going to participate in that, but going back in prior years, it hasn't been what we thought, so we think $20,000 would be sufficient in that program. Workman's compensation, same thing, was budgeted for 125 originally. If you look across, we spent $93,000 in '14 and $113,000 in '15, so we feel that 115 should be sufficient. Unemployment, same thing, we really haven't spent what was budgeted, so I think reducing that to $90,000, we'll be okay with that. District Medicare, same thing, the calculations that I did indicate that we should probably need about $168,000 or $170,000 there, so 175 should be fine. HRA, the HRA account for employees that we reimburse them for co-pays and deductibles. If you look back, you can see we spent $14,000 in 2014 and $13,000 in '15, so I think $35,000 is more than enough to take care of our requirements there. And then the last one, short-term debt service, we know what that interest is going to be on the note for the deficit loan, so we can reduce that by $1,500 and still have sufficient money there. So of the $200,000, $161,000 was taken out of those, those accounts there. The next page, if we go to Wire Village School, we had increased the workbook account, and in light of some of the curriculum updates we're doing in the request, we thought that we could put that back to the original budget, 20, of 2,500. And then same thing with health supplies and materials, $1,500 is, if you look back on historical expenditures, it should be more than enough to cover the needs. Custodial supplies, we had increased it a little bit, so we backed it back down to the original budget. Rubbish removal, same thing, it just seemed to have extra in there, and I think some of that was because in the current year, we, we used extra trash removal services because of the move and the closing of Lake Street, so. And the heating, I looked at the, at the cost so far, and I think $45,000 should be fine. If we look back some years, it's, you know, it's a gamble, but we spent $46,000 in 2014, so I think 45 should be okay. And then the maintenance of buildings account, we had put an additional $10,000 in there across the board for each school, so I went through for every school and reduced it by five. So we put an additional $5,000 in those accounts. Next Knox Trail, principal supplies and materials, we had increased it, so we brought it back down to $3,000, but if you look back, this should be sufficient. $2,700 was spent in '15 and only $1,000 in 2014. Same, same principle with the workbook account, we had put some extra in there, but we think 2,500 should be sufficient. And the same with the nurses' supplies, we had bumped it up a little bit, but we took it, took that increase back down. And again, the $5,000 in maintenance of buildings. East Brookfield, same thing, left it, left the workbook account at 2,500, so we reduced what had originally been asked for, and the $5,000 reduction in the maintenance of building Lake Street School, nothing there. And the high school, page 11, there's no, no changes there. The only change is on page 12, we had put $20,000 extra into the maintenance of buildings, so we reduced it by 10 to, to $40,000. And altogether, that totals $204,000 in reductions, none of which should directly affect teachers or staffing in the classrooms. So, so that $200,000 reduction in the budget, in addition to that, we went back through and looked at revenue sources that we could use to apply to the budget that we presented the other night. So on page one is the assessment calculation based on the new numbers. So if you look at, on the third column from the right, the preliminary 2017 column, and look under district revenue, you'll see the $150,000 that we're budgeting to collect for Medicaid reimbursement, that has stayed the same. Excess and deficiency that we're applying to the debt payment, $802,462. School choice, we're budgeting to apply, $528,000 of school choice money to this current budget, which is intended to offset, partially offset the cost of some of the new positions and the benefits with those positions, to lessen the impact to the two towns in the first year that they're fully funded. And so I'll explain as we go on, that in the second year, the next year's budget, or the 2018 budget, we would apply about half of that amount to the, to that year's budget to reduce those increases again. And then in the third year, all the, all those new positions along with their benefits would be fully included in the budget and would be expected to be funded by the communities. And then the last amount of revenue is $12,500. We're budgeting to add a part-time custodian here at Wire Village School, and mainly that's because of the addition of the after-school and before-school program, so we need another custodian to help clean up after that program and because of that program, so it seems appropriate that we should take the cost of that out of the fees from that program. So all those, all those revenue sources combined, along with the $204,000 in cuts that we just went through, now bring the assessments down. So for East Brookfield, what we presented the other night, the assessment increased by 9.67 percent, so now it's down to 3.55 percent. On Tuesday night, the increase to the town of East Brookfield was $189,334, and the new budget, it's a $69,444 increase. The town of Spencer, on Tuesday night, the numbers indicated a 10.15 percent increase in their assessment. After applying the changes tonight, we're down to a 2.99 percent increase, which amounts to $234,830 to the town of Spencer. So it's just slightly above the minimum contribution, and much more palatable than the 10.1 percent that we had the other night. So all in all, our assessment revenue is up by 3.1 percent, but our total budget is up by 7.5 percent. And the difference where, the difference between the two is what we're using in our own, you know, the combination of the cuts and additional revenue to fund that increase, so we don't pass it on to the communities.
Yeah, I think the positive point here is that administration has been able to identify some sources of revenue that could be applied to this without affecting what the asks were or what administration was bringing to us, telling us that they needed in the upcoming year in order to move the district forward. So I think that's a big plus from the, from the school standpoint, but I think in conjunction with that, to go from what we were looking at a few nights ago of a 10.1 percent increase, which was somewhere between $900,000, I think, and a million bucks to the town of Spencer, and almost $200,000 to East Brookfield, I think to reduce those numbers to what we've got now makes this a very responsible budget that should have every chance of passing on first shot at town meetings in both communities. I think with the needs that we've had in the district, for us to be able to bring forward a budget that we're being told by administration can help move us forward to improving our standing and have this minimal amount of increase to both communities, I don't think this is going to be difficult for either community to be able to, to accept. So I think we've got a lot of positives going here. We wanted to make every attempt not to get into a situation where we would present the budget that wouldn't pass a town meeting and end up with a second request and force us to go to a 1/12 budget, and eventually, who knows, into a district-wide meeting. I think we avoid that by doing this. The committee was able to stick to their position of saying that we would support administration as to what they were bringing forward, and we've been able to do that, and we've been able to do it with very little impact on the taxpayers of both communities. So I think it's a big plus. Gary?
So if we could just go to page two, I just want to walk you through the available funds that we're using to reduce the cost of the budget. On the left-hand side of the page is kind of an analysis of school choice, so we started this fiscal year with almost $400,000 in school choice. We're anticipating, we're anticipating receiving $271,000 in receipts this year. The committee had voted to pay for the academic affairs position in the Wire Village Assistant Principal and some security upgrades. Because of our net school spending situation, we're, I'm going to recommend at a later meeting that we take those expenses and move them into the budget. So that means all of the $399,000 and the additional $271 will be available to us. So at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have $670,000 in school choice revenue, and of that amount, we were planning to apply $528,000 to the '17 budget. And in 2017, I'm estimating a $216,000 increase in school choi, oh, that's what we'll collect in, in 2017, and you can, you'll see that it's down by, you know, close to $55,000 from 200, from 2016. So even by using the $528,000, I'm anticipating at the end of fiscal year '17, we'll still have $358,000 in school choice available. And then in the following year's budget, we could apply $275,000 to offset the increase in those positions and their benefits. We would then collect another $200,000, so even after all that, we'll still have $283,000 available in school choice at the end of 2018. If you go to the right side of that page, these are some of the other available funds that we'll have going forward. We had to reserve our shortfall in net school spending, and that's that first amount, $519,000. So that's going to get closed out at, at the end of this fiscal year, and will become E and D. So, so we know we're going to get at least that amount of money in E and D next year. The school choice amount that we'll have available is the $358,000 that we just went through. And then on July 1st, when we make our next contribution to the supplemental reserve fund, we'll have close to $500,000 available in that. So altogether, when we get into fiscal year '17, we will have just short of $1.4 million in available funds to use going forward. So I don't want anyone to think that by using the school choice and that we're going to leave ourselves, you know, without any funding for the future. So we should...
What we've been able to do here, so no one loses the, the impact of this, is we're paying off this note, we're leaving this district debt-free, and we're presenting a budget that is going to be a sustainable budget for the next two years. There's more than enough income in this budget to sustain it for the next two years and to continue to maintain the programs that we've, that we've put in, which is really a fantastic accomplishment to come from where we started from. So I think to pay off that note and not to have that debt, to have this amount of funds left over, to be identified, to go forward for capital needs for all of the buildings in the district, most importantly, the high school. And I think the idea that administration had of taking those positions and doing them on a percentage basis, where we're, we're paying the full boat this year, and then going down over the next two years, will give the, both communities ample opportunity to prepare and to rearrange their revenue streams, to be able to pick those positions up in year three. Gary?
So the only, the only other thing that we haven't touched on, if we go to page three, the summary of the budget, if you go down below, you know, the bottom half of the page, the budget requests, they're, they're pretty much the same as we went through the other night. The only thing that's changed is the district-wide instructional programs. We reduced it by $55,000, and we moved $30,000 to a line for the athletic program for various improvements, uniforms, equipment that they need, and $25,000 to the music and arts program to support those programs as well.
The reason that was done, I met with the administration today, I think with the funds that we've moved around to address all the issues that we've addressed in the district, I think in order to be able to touch all of the hooks that are here in the district, what's offered to the students, we've addressed curriculum and textbooks and all these other issues, but I think we have to look at music, the arts program, and athletics as all-encompassing in that whole curriculum platform. I think it was important to pull money out for each one of those items, so that we can have a one-time infusion of money into the athletic department, into the music and arts program, to get them started and bring them up to SNF, to be able to purchase items that they haven't been able to get up to this point. But after that, there are items that will have to be brought forward and budgeted within the budget. It's not going to just be a pool of free money going to those department heads. It will, it will be monitored by administration, they'll have to go through this normal process of making requests and to get approval and stuff, but at least the department heads will now be able to go back to the people that are in those departments and say, "Look, we are finally in a position where we have some funds, and we can try to move forward in each of our departments and get items and equipment," or whatever the issues are that they needed to move forward. Gary?
So, so those are the changes up above, the staffing changes down below, they were the same amounts that we talked about the other night. The other night, we didn't have the fourth grade teacher listed, but we did talk about it, so that's been added here as an additional position. So that's the $55,000 position for the fourth grade teacher is what the increase is in those budget requests from Tuesday night. So bottom-line budget is $25,824,848. No, no, that's what we presented on Tuesday, the bottom-line budget tonight revised is
Any questions for members? Heather?
If we pay off the note before July 1st, would we still have to put money into the supplemental reserve?
We can't pay it off before July 1st. Right now, the note matures in September, so we have to wait at that point. We are checking that out to see if it would be possible to do it sooner, but our understanding right now is that the note matures on September 1st, and we can't pay it off until then.
Okay, and then, once we pay down the note, the supplemental reserve money goes back to the district?
Yeah, that's our, the supplemental reserve money is our, is our money.
I'd like to see that go back into E and D if we're using E and D to pay down the debt, just a thought for future.
Is that it, Heather?
No, that's all.
Someone, Angela?
Yeah, I just had a question about the instructional programs. I totally agree, we need to support arts and, you know me, the singer, but, and athletic programs, but that was the pool where the science, the ELA, and the math curriculum were, that money. So what are we not going to be able to get because of that?
Dr. Curl?
When Mr. Suda and I went through this, I don't know if you have that backup information of all the programs that were included in that line still with you tonight, I did not bring that, but we believe that we can still provide most of what we need, and what we're pulling back on, we think we get the benefit, and it's across the board in all programs, as opposed to the hyper-focus. And we also will be, right now, looking at programs that we can help right at the end of the year, as Mr. Clodius talked about the other night. So we're hoping to be able to bridge those at the end of this year, and then be able to work with that money next year.
Okay.
Anyone, did someone else have a question down here? Was, Angela, were you the only one? I heard another, I didn't know if I...
Heather? I had one more question. Were the benefits included in the added full-time employee positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And I guess one more question. The school choice funds, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're gaining revenue from that, it seems like more students are choicing out than choosing in.
Yeah, so the students that choice out, if, that number is in a different part of the budget. So if you go to, you go to page six, and it's like the third line item from the bottom, says school choice tuition. So you'll see that we're budgeting $1,250,000 in 2017.
Yeah.
In 2015, it was $1,008,000, $1,088,000, and in 2014, it was $892,000. So you can see the increase of the kids going out of district. And the money that comes in from kids choicing in gets put into this other account that the committee can spend as they see fit on additional educational initiatives. So they don't net the two together, they just, they let you keep the money that comes in, and they make you pay the money that goes out separately.
Okay, thank you.
To your previous question, Heather, I don't know if, the superintendent's reserve fund, that money is included in the total available funds that would be present in June of 2017.
Okay.
So it is in there. Anyone else have any, excuse me, anyone else have any questions in regards to any items of the budget? Vinnie?
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you to the control. We had talked about a stabilization fund as opposed to an E and D fund. So what does it take to set up a stabilization fund in a regional district, and what are the rules and parameters of the stabilization fund in the, in a regional district?
I think it takes a vote of the committee, and it takes, you know, an annual contribution. And we still haven't got an answer from the state yet on what, what becomes of the supplemental reserve fund, but in my mind, I think the supplemental reserve fund becomes the initial stabilization account, because it's really intended to be for extraordinary repairs, maintenance, and those sorts of things. So if, if that's true, and I'm, I don't, I don't know that it wouldn't be, that number would become the new stabilization fund, and then we could build the same, a contribution every year into the budget and continue to put money into that account, like we're doing with the supplemental reserve fund. The only difference would be, we wouldn't need state approval to spend it, just committee approval.
If you recall, Mr. Clodius, when we first, we're having discussions with the state about the note, it was made very clear to us that the money that was paid into the superintendent's reserve account was our money, and it was going to be going into free cash once it was paid, and it was projected over a 10-year period to amount to almost a million dollars.
Right.
So there's, there's not going to be any question from our standpoint that that money is ours.
Oh.
And we're going to be able to use it. There was some question about that earlier.
Yeah, no, no, there's no, no question in my mind about that. That's, that's not where I was going. I guess to be more, to be clearer, I'm trying to understand what the difference is, that's a better way to put it.
Okay.
Between an E and D account and a stabilization account. You know, is, is there a difference?
Well, yeah, there is, because E and D is kind of like a moving target, so every year you close the books, and the surplus gets recertified, where stabilization is in its own reserved account, and that money just stays there until it's used. So it doesn't get rolled over every year, it just automatically stays in its own account until you vote to spend it. So, so every, yeah, every year, E and D, you know, you close the books and you get what you get, but if you have a million dollars in your stabilization account, it doesn't get closed out and go anywhere and have to be recertified, it just sits in that account, earns its own interest.
Okay, so I guess with that said, what I'd like to see happen is, I'd like to see us establish a stabilization account in the district. And we're at a special board meeting tonight, right? So we can take votes?
Right.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate, I'm going to defer to the control, I mean, I'm prepared to make that motion tonight to, to set that account up, but do you want to do some?
Yeah, let me, let me find out exactly what votes required.
That's fine.
But why don't we, why don't we put that on for Tuesday night's meeting? Because the other question that I would like to have answered, now that I see where you're going with this, is do E and D funds have to be approved by both communities before we use them?
So the process with E and D is, we, I think the communities both get notified when it gets certified, as to the amount.
And they have a certain timeframe to respond, and if...
Yeah, we notify them if we want to spend, you know, whatever we want to use.
Right.
Except in this case, because this is going to be part of the annual town meeting budget, so they'll be approving that at the annual town meeting.
Right.
But if we came back in the fall and wanted to use $200,000, we notify them how much and what we intend to use it for. They have 45 days to call a meeting.
Correct.
To either, you know, to vote it down, and if they do nothing, then it's approval.
So my follow-up question would be, if we establish the stabilization account that Vinnie's talking about, does that have to go for approval to both communities, or does that in effect act as a free cash account for us to be able to use as the committee sees fit?
Yeah, I think the initial approval, I'm not sure how the approval would go, if they need to initially approve the establishment of the stabilization fund, but once it's established, it would be like any, any other source of funding, like school choice, it's at the approval of, of the school committee to spend.
It's, it seems to me that I recall reading about this back a while ago, and I think it's much like our town stabilization fund, that if it's established by the board, the board has the, the right to use those funds, but by a two-thirds vote, and not just a simple majority of transferring money around and stuff. So there's a, it's a, it's a way of putting money aside, but it also requires a more difficult vote to take it out and spend it, which is a good thing, because it's, it will prevent it from just being rated and spent at will, you know?
So, so this is not contingent upon the budget.
Right.
This does not have to come back at our next meeting. I think it's, we're having a budget hearing next week, I think we're going to be pretty tied up with that, and, you know, hopefully, there's a lot of people here, so they're informed properly, and they get the, the big picture, because this is a good picture.
Right.
But I would like to put it on the agenda for our first meeting in April.
Okay. Okay.
So that, and, and here's my specific questions. The differences between the two, how the money can be spent, and if we set that up, the stabilization account up, can we set, and when we're setting that up, can we set the parameters that this board can spend it, but it takes a two-thirds majority? Because I absolutely would want to see that.
I agree.
Because if we're going to take money out of our savings account, I'd want a, you know, super majority of the board to be able to support that, you know, and, and say that this is the right thing to be, to do. I don't want it to be a, a four to three vote to, to do that.
Right, I, I agree. Heather, you had a question?
Well, I was just curious. I know with E and D, you can keep 5% of the total operating budget in E and D. Is there a cap with stabilization fund as well, or can you go over?
I don't think there is. No, but I don't know that. I could find out.
That's another great question, though. If we move it to stabilization so that we're trying to take care of capital needs of this district for our buildings and infrastructure moving forward, you know, are we capped at that 5%? That's, that's actually a, a great, a great.
And that's a, that's, that's a recommendation from the state that we should maintain a minimum of 5% in E and D. The district hasn't been in that position for quite some time, probably back seven or eight years or so, you know? So we certainly will be in that position now. That's why we have to be careful as far as how much money we are allowed to apply to get the assessment down to the communities. I think we're pretty much, pretty close to our maximum as to what we can do and stuff. But we certainly need to keep focus on, on getting as close to that 5%, which is close to a million bucks to, that we should be carrying in, in E and D.
My concern, Mr. Chairman, is, is that, you know, if we have a catastrophic failure, whether it's a boiler at one, one school, we know we have issues with boilers at, at a couple of our schools, you know, we have catastrophic failures, it's going to take, you know, an emergency meeting and an emergency appropriation from this board. Granted, forget about where the money might come from down the road, but it's going to take money out of the district to, to, to address it initially.
Right.
And we've got to have that available. We, we need to prepare for that because it will happen.
Right, yeah.
It has happened.
Yeah.
And it's going to happen again and, and we don't know what magnitude, you know, same thing with the roof, so.
Another important piece of it, to this, is Vinnie mentioned at the last meeting, and that's also holds true for what we're doing here. There's a great need to improve our bond rating in the district for what's going to be coming down the road. And so along with paying off this note, to be able to start to build our E and D account and stuff and to start to build the, the cash flow that we have from school choice and stuff, is going to further improve the, the speed and the rise of our bond rating as we move forward. So we're, we're, we really are doing a lot of good things. In, in the past couple of months, everything is just finally starting to, to come together and all the efforts and the hard work that has taken place for the last couple of years, we're finally going to start to see the fruits of that. And that's a, that's a good thing.
But that, Mr. Chairman, that bond rating, like I did say, you know, it goes down in a heartbeat, just like that.
Yeah.
It, even though we're doing, taking all the right steps, it will take years for our, as you well know.
Yep.
For, for the bond rating to, to creep back up. It creeps up ever so slowly.
Yeah.
But that's okay. We're going in the right direction, I think.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments that you wish to make in regards to this? If not, what the plan will be is we'll be finalizing this over the next few days, putting the budget book together. We'll be meeting next Tuesday, which is really a mandatory meeting for everyone to be here because we will vote the budget that night to send to both communities and everybody should be able to be present to, to weigh in on that. Vinnie?
I guess the only thing I'll say is that from, as, as one committee person, I, I have full intentions of supporting this budget. I, I understand we have a public hearing, that's our, our responsibility to hold that. I'll listen to what the, what the taxpayers have to say and anyone else that comes to the microphone. But I think that we've done our job in, in making sure that we have a responsible budget, a sustainable budget. And I think it's, I absolutely think this, with what we've done with our excess, that we certainly could use in our own district, applying it to the bill, to, to, to the budget, to the operating budget. I think we've done our due diligence and done the best we can to send this to both communities for approval at town meeting.
So I, I guess the last question that the chair would have, at this point, with everything that members have heard, is there anyone here that cannot support this budget or has any concerns or problems with the budget? If you do, I would prefer to hear it now and not next Tuesday night when we come to the final vote because there will not be another meeting on the budget. It will happen Tuesday night, it will be voted up or down, and that will be the final opportunity that members will have. So is there anyone that has any questions whatsoever with the budget that's being presented that it's going to go forward on Tuesday night? If so, this is your opportunity to speak up. Otherwise, we will be listening to the public and then we'll be taking our vote after that. Everybody's good with it?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. I mean, if, if this is, administration's happy with this. I mean, this is, you know, it's a very responsible budget to give to the towns and, you know, you guys are happy with it. I'm, you know.
Okay. All right, if, if there's no other questions, the only other item I have for you is, we won't, we're not going to discuss it, it's not on the agenda, but I had told you at the meeting Tuesday night that I would send to you the evaluation reports, the aggregate report that I did. Just got short of time and wasn't able to get it out to you yesterday. I handed you all copies of it today. That is the total of the evaluations that were submitted to me. Nothing's going to change on those number-wise. I'm giving them to you just for your own review. If you have any concerns about them, you can feel free to call me. But that is what will become, come forward to us on Tuesday night to be voted so that this first evaluation cycle will be put to rest and we can move on from there. So please contact me prior to Tuesday if you have any questions. Otherwise, be prepared to vote on it at Tuesday night's meeting. Other than that, we have a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting isn't going to start until 7:30, so we've got a while to wait. I didn't know how much time it was going to take because we didn't know what the concerns were going to be with the budget and stuff, so we got time to go grab a burger at DQ or come back. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion by Vinnie is here, second.
Second.
Second is by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
The vote, we'll see you back at 7:30.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting tonight was to have a public hearing, so to speak, and a report out of the asbestos conditions and findings at David Prowdy High School. The board had received their report, but there were still a lot of questions that people had. Hopefully, they'll see it on the taping in their home. We were really hoping that we would have had a much better turnout of parents and teachers and, and students who were concerned about the condition of the high school. But I certainly appreciate and thank those of you that did come tonight to, to listen. I'm going to have Mr. Suter introduce the gentleman that are going to be giving the report tonight. And they'll make a presentation to us and they'll answer any questions anybody has and as many questions as you have. When we get to the point for questions, just raise your hand, I'll call on you. You can ask whatever you want after somebody else speaks. If it jogs your memory and you have something else, give you as many turns of asking questions that you want. We'll stay here as long as you want to stay to get answered any of your concerns. So Gary, could you introduce for us?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So we have, from ATC Corporation, we have Brian Williams, who's the branch manager, and Ed, and I'm not going to butcher your name, who did some monitoring for us over the, over the February break on the projects that we had done. So I'll ask Brian to come on up and get us going, give us a little history on how we got to where we are today.
If it helps, Brian, if you want to twist that podium so you can be partly facing the audience, that would be fine. Beautiful.
Can everybody hear me?
Good.
So thanks for having me in. My name's Brian Williams with ATC Group Services. We're in West Springfield, Massachusetts. I'm the branch manager. We are an environmental testing and consulting company. We've been doing, Ed and I, cologee, is that, that's how you?
Thank you.
Have been doing this, this type of work for nearly 30 years, believe it or not. So I thought I'd start out with just a little history on, on why we did, why we were hired and why we did the inspection we did. The federal regulation, AHIRA, Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, came out in 1987, required that all schools in the country were inspected for asbestos-containing materials. So in '88 and '89, all the schools got tested. And the other requirement is that every three years, an accredited inspector go back through the schools and re-inspect and assess the condition of the asbestos-containing materials. So when were we hired? Back in?
2010, I think.
2010, initially. We did, we did a re-inspection and based upon our re-inspection and response actions, some abatement work was done. It mainly involved replacing ceiling tiles. We were then hired in 2015 to do another re-inspection, which we completed probably late in 2015.
Yep.
And we're planning on doing some more abatement activities in, over the March, uh, February break, excuse me. But then there were some water leaks and that sort of took precedent, so we've pushed off some of our abatement actions until April and then in the summer again. So overall, you know, we did the inspection, we found some materials that were damaged and need, you know, need some attention. Overall, that most of the asbestos-containing materials in the building are in pretty good shape. I don't know, if you want me to go any, in any more depth than that, I mean, there's a report that's available to everyone, it's 190 some odd pages long, 172, if anybody wants to review it. So it gives a list of all the materials in, in the building and their condition assessment and what we recommend be done. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, obviously, almost all school districts in the country have schools with asbestos-containing materials. Most of the, most of the school districts manage it in place, which is what EPA recommends. Instead of just, you know, wholesale taking it out of schools, is to do what you can to manage it in place, manage it in good condition. So I think, you know, that's what the school district's been doing here.
Brian, could you, could you speak to the point, when we had the broken water pipes and stuff, there were a lot of statements and, and claims that people were affected from the asbestos that came down, it was wet from the ceilings and that type of stuff. And I don't have that understanding from what I read of the information that's been given to us. Could you speak to that as to how people react and, and what the symptoms are and the time period and all that type of stuff?
Sure. So there were two water leaks in, in the school. And the first one was in a heater, I believe, up on the third floor that leaked water down onto the second and, and first floor. It did damage some of the asbestos-containing ceiling tiles and caused them to fall down onto the floor. So we got a call from the school district early on a Friday morning, asking for advice on what to do. We said, you know, get everybody out of there, let's get an abatement crew in there as soon as we can, and, you know, let's get it cleaned up as quickly as we can. We talked with the state DEP. We got our air sampling technician out to the school as quickly as we could, start running some background air samples. The good thing about that, if you can say there's a good thing about an emergency like that, is that one of the control measures for controlling asbestos fibers is water. So, I mean, it was not a good situation that an asbestos-containing ceiling tile came down to the, fell down to the floor, but the good thing is that it was, it was wet and therefore, our air sampling showed that there didn't appear to be any airborne asbestos. And of course, that's what you want to prevent is any airborne asbestos where you can breathe it in. So, you know, we did get everybody out of the classrooms, we got the abatement crew in there as, as quickly as we could. We worked through the weekend, got all the, the damaged materials out of there. And, and then we have to run a series of air samples to show that, you know, the abatement activity was done and that they can, you know, the abatement crew can take down their containment barriers. And, and that was all done. And I, actually, it went into the vacation week, so we had a few extra days to, to get that all done, but everything was cleared and people were allowed back in there. And then, I don't remember how much later it was, there was another water leak. My God, I'm less clear on, on where that.
It was early, early Tuesday morning, like 3:00 AM is when we were notified.
Mm-hmm.
And then we called you in the morning.
Okay.
To take care of that.
Right. And, and again, we got the same abatement company out there, made sure everybody got out of there, did our air sampling, they did the, the cleanup, and again, we did some post-abatement air sampling to make sure everything was okay for people to go back in. So, you know, those are, those are things that happen and, you know, I think everybody acted appropriately in, in getting the materials contained and cleaned up and, and removed. So.
Could you speak directly, though, my, my question directly is, could any student or staff member have been affected by any asbestos contamination from, from those events?
I mean, not, from, from the information we have and the data we have, I mean, as soon as we got out here, we started running air samples in the area of the, of the damaged asbestos. We didn't find any elevated airborne asbestos fiber levels. So, and, and again, the material was kept wet, which is a good thing that probably, you know, if a, a dry ceiling tile falls to the ground, that's a different matter. But when it's soaking wet and that's why it falls, the asbestos fibers are going to stay right in the water for the most part. So as far as we could tell, there was no exposure risk.
Could you speak to the, the reaction time of administration from the time that the problem occurred? Were the proper procedures followed, the timeframes to contact the proper people? Could you speak to that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly, you know, when, when the water leaks occurred. I, I, you know, I guess there were, you know, by the time I, I talked to somebody, I think there were students and, and teachers in the, in the building. So, you know, I, I can't say whether things could have happened. Is that the question, whether things could have happened quicker or?
Well, just from the response time of, of you and the abatement company being contacted and stuff, I mean, I understand his administration was on it at 6:00 in the morning and that no students were ever given access or, or put into those classrooms and stuff. But I just wanted to see if you could speak to the point of the response from administration to contact the proper authorities.
Yeah, I mean, we, we were certainly in touch with the school early Friday morning or early Tuesday morning, as the case may be. And, you know, it seemed like all the appropriate actions had been taken and, you know, we were given the go-ahead to get people out to the school as quickly as possible to, you know, get it cleaned up.
In reviewing the report that you gave us, that document.
Yeah.
With all the items that needed to be addressed, and there was some short range and some long-term things that had to be addressed. And I think that creates a bit of confusion because I think for a lot of the people in the community, that regardless of what the response is from professionals, they're, they're still going to take the position that the building's contaminated or that there's issues to be concerned about with the students there and stuff. On some of the issues that you want addressed, I noticed like some have a timeframe of December 17, December 18. Can you speak to that a little bit of the various, in other words, I think ceiling tiles, we, maybe December 17 or December 18, floor tiles? And what is the danger that you see, if any, with the current floor tiles that are there or remaining ceiling tiles? Although we, we are putting a plan in place to replace some of the other ceiling tiles on that third floor.
Right. So when we put together the, the asbestos report and the management plan, the, the management plan part of it is when we recommend what to do with the asbestos materials that are in the building. So there are sort of basically two types of asbestos-containing materials. One is friable, which is a material like a, a ceiling tile where you can crumple it with your hand. Another is non-friable, which is a material like a floor tile, which is hard, and the asbestos fibers are, are bound into the... asbestos fibers are, are bound into the, into the material, and you, you can't crush it with hand pressure. Friable materials are something we're more concerned with, because they can, they can break apart more easily, and the, the fibers can become airborne. The other thing we want to look at is the, the damage or condition of the material. So the materials that, in, in that report, that we recommended quicker action were the damaged asbestos-containing ceiling tiles. And that, those were the items we were going to take care of in the February break, which now we're going to do in the April break. So, you know, there's more of a concern of a damaged friable material like the, like the ceiling tiles, so we recommended taking care of those quicker than the others. So that's why there's different dates, different recommended dates to get those accomplished.
Obviously, with the dates that are given, you, you see nothing present in that building that presents any type of inherent danger to any student or staff?
Right, right. If, if we saw something that we felt was an imminent-type hazard, we would bring it to your attention, you know, Gary's attention, right away, to get that taken care of immediately. But we didn't see anything of that, you know, if there was, you know, some debris on the ground, or something that really caused alarm, then we'd certainly bring it to your attention.
Could you speak to the, the, the type of asbestos that is sprayed on the steel members of the skeleton of the building? And what is the danger, or if there is no danger with that asbestos that's there between the ceiling and the actual members of, of the skeleton? Can you speak to that? Because there's been concerns about the fact that there's still asbestos between the suspended ceilings and the actual steel members. And there seems to be some confusion about whether there's a danger if that stuff doesn't get wet and remains dry as long as it's contained within those two substructures.
Right. So there, on the, how many floors on that? It's not, it's not present on the third floor, it's present on the second, third, and...
First and second.
First and second, that's it, only three. So, right. So the fireproofing is on the steel beams above the suspended ceiling. It's, it's actually in relatively good condition. There's, there's different forms of spray-on fireproofing. There's more sort of a fluffy kind that, that can become delaminated, and, and that can become kind of, that can become a more of a hazard. This is more of a cementitious type of fireproofing, which has remained on the beam, hasn't become delaminated, as far as we've seen. So it's actually in, in fairly good condition. So, you know, our recommendation is to, let's focus on, on the ceiling tiles, which are more accessible to the building occupants, rather than focusing on the fireproofing.
And, and in regards to the floor tiles, did you see any major problems with what was left, the condition of the floor tiles that are there?
Well, there are certainly some floor tiles that have, are, are not any longer adhered to the floor, and there, there are some that are damaged, and we're recommending those get taken care of, abated in, during the April break. But nothing, I mean, floor tile that you'd really be concerned about is if they, you know, if they became really crumbled and pulverized, that's when they would really become a hazard, but we haven't seen that.
Okay. Before I open it up to the audience, do any members have any questions that they would like to ask in either regards to the report or the conditions of what happened?
I'm sure you've all read that 172-page report.
We have.
Top to bottom.
Absolutely.
Then I'll, I'm going to open it up to the audience, and does, does anyone in the audience have a, yes, why don't you stand up, please? Just give us your name and...
My name is Jay Morgan. I'm here at David Rowley. I'm not understanding that there's no problem in this school, because I've seen my friends, I've seen teachers have allergic reactions, I've seen things fall from the ceiling, I've seen my, my friend's eyes are swell shut from things in this school. There's no way that this is a healthy environment for any student. I know it. I know that teachers are missing days of school, and we have to miss our learning process because they can't breathe, and that's on the third floor. Some teachers have to bring in air quality, like air purifiers to be able to breathe in the school. I don't understand how any of you on this school committee could tell me that that's a safe environment for any of these students. Do any of you have kids? Would any of you want them to put into this school? And I'm one of, I'm on the school committee, I'm a student rep, and I think this is something that all the students want to know, that should be able to know. This is not okay. This is many of the things that are not okay. And I could keep going on and on, like how our principal was allegedly assaulted.
Now, listen, this is a hearing to do with asbestos. If you want to make a comment or ask a question in regards to that, we'll welcome that. That's the only topic that we're going to be discussing.
Look, I can't, I cannot believe that 10 of you, or 11 of you, or however many of you are, sit here and tell me that it's safe for these students to be in this environment. It's absolutely absurd, and it's about the most outrageous thing that I've seen.
All right, thank you, thank you. I, I guess the response that I'll make from that, from the chair, and then you can follow up, Brian, is we're not telling anybody anything. We're not professionals in this area. We've been asked, through the complaints that have come forward, to have professionals in this area to come and give a report. So that's what we're doing. We're having professionals that have come and done the inspections, that this is their business, this is what they're qualified and licensed to do, and you can either accept that, or you can reject it. But I don't know where else you'll go to get the answer. I, I don't know what else you want us to do, other than to hire the professionals that we've been asked to hire. They're, they're, they're not on the take from us, we haven't asked them to give us any particular type of a response and stuff. They come here recommended by the state, they're licensed by the state, and they're simply reporting to us what their findings are. So if you can pick up from there, Brian, in response to the student's question.
Yeah, I just, I mean, from asbestos perspective, I mean, we haven't seen anything that would, that would cause any, you know, imminent hazard. We would certainly, I mean, we're professionals, if, if we saw something that we felt was a hazard, we'd certainly bring it to the administration's attention. We, we just haven't seen that at this point. I mean, we have some things we're recommending get taken care of, some sooner rather than later, but nothing that is alarming.
Anyone else have a question or a comment? Yes, sir?
I guess I answered the question. You say there's no danger, you say as soon as the ceiling tiles fell, the truck coming to get out of the building.
Yeah, I mean, when we found out that, you know, a material like that was damaged and had, had fallen, then we, you know, we said you got to take immediate action, get people out of that room. We need to get an abatement company in there to clean it up as soon as possible.
Ceiling tiles.
Right.
That was true. How do you know the weather?
Could have happened 50 years ago.
Well, our, our air samples seem to back, back that up. But yeah, I mean, these, think, you know, when, when you have a building that contains asbestos, things like that will happen. That's why we have a management plan in place, and, you know, these folks know who to call, and you have to, you know, learn how to react to these things. So yeah, it, it can happen, you just need to know how to react to it.
Sir, if I may, I'm sorry, we didn't, just for the record, could you give the name to be in the record book?
I didn't recall.
Did you get it, miss? Yep, thank you. Do you have, do you have another, do you have another question?
I don't think he answered the question.
If, if the, if a dry tile had fallen, I mean, that's certainly more of a, more of a hazard.
I mean, rules on...
You know, we'd certainly want to get people out of there as quickly as possible.
Or is it bad?
Well, asbestos health effects occur generally over a long period of exposure. They're not something, there's no acute reaction, it's, it's something that happens over, you know, generally, folks who have worked with asbestos and have been exposed over a long period of time. So for building occupants, you want to just, you know, keep that exposure to a minimum. Again, there's, you know, millions of buildings throughout the country that contain asbestos. It was widely-used material in many, many different building products. So there's a lot of building owners across the country who have had to learn how to manage it in place. And again, that's what, you know, that's what the EPA generally recommends, is manage it in place. You don't want things like ceiling tiles falling down, for sure. You know, I think that school is working to fix the roof leak that would, you know, help prevent those kind of things.
And, and just for a point of information, the reference that Brian made about fixing the roof to stop the water infiltration and the falling of ceiling tiles, that money has been put aside in our budget, that's going out to bid in the next couple of weeks, and that, that roof is going to be replaced over the summer. Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir?
Ken Olson. I believe that your testing was done throughout the whole building, the rooms that were affected by the ceiling tile problems.
You're talking about the air testing?
Yes.
Ed, do you have...
The area where the ceiling house collapsed, on the, where, second, first floor, maybe the other rooms, the floor gave red. I think that's where it was.
Yeah.
So it was around the roof there, the ceiling house, that's all. On the third floor, most of the house collapsed, it was the four houses around the unit heaters of the parking, and with four houses attached. So we found out, and because of those areas, we ran air samples inside those rooms, and they were at acceptable levels. And then down on the other floors, the second floor, had spread out fireproofing with the asbestos ceiling tiles. So when those, given the geography, the other standards up there, handling those, it's standard, standard D.
So testing isn't done anywhere else in the building?
There, there has been an air quality report done by a different engineering firm, they're coming in March, do we have the date in, in March yet?
Twenty-eighth.
I believe March 28th, there'll be another hearing for the air quality report that was done for the building. Tonight is strictly in regards to the asbestos. But there was, there was an, there was an assessment done of the whole, of the whole school?
The whole school?
Yeah, yeah.
The second floor, the third floor, the fourth floor, that area, so there was air testing down there.
Someone, yes, you hit, your name, please?
You said that the floor has... What if we start...
The floor tile? Certainly you don't want to have cracked floor tile, but that, I wouldn't see that as a, a big hazard. The, the way the floor tiles are made, the asbestos fibers are, and I don't know how much you guys know about asbestos, basically, it's a rock, it's a fibrous rock, and they put it in the floor tile to make them stronger. But they're really bound into the, in the floor tile. So essentially, the only way to, to get the fibers out of the floor tile would be to really abrade them. So a simple crack is not going to cause much of an exposure risk.
In, in regards to the floor tiles, we are going out to bid to get a price, to see what it's going to cost to replace the floor tiles and the ceiling tiles throughout the building. And we're in the process of putting that together to go out to bid on. The other question in regards to, a follow-up from some of the questions asking here, Brian, I mean, other than a roof leak, how common is it for ceiling tiles to just fall out of the ceiling? Are they usually not provoked?
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't normally see a ceiling tile just, just fall down without some, you know, something from above causing it to fall, like a, like a, a water leak. That'd be pretty rare.
Yeah, okay.
Or something from below, you know, someone doing something, poking it and, and causing it to fall.
Yeah. Does any, yes, ma'am? Name, please?
Miracle, I'm terrible. The air quality, is that checked, mold, too?
We, we were just looking for asbestos at that, at that time.
Is there another test?
Yeah, it, it sounds like...
The, the air quality report will address mold and the total air quality inside the building. Any, someone else have a question? Yes, sir?
Okay.
You did the parts of the school that were strictly for asbestos, and I know that was the last year that I had to, but all of those parts of the school, down by the kid, or down by the school, which have signs that say, "Oh, this is due to asbestos, they are on the list, that kids were going to be excellent to get things." Are now cut off for asbestos, or is it a danger of asbestos?
So, so the asbestos signs are required by law to be put on the door of mechanical spaces, and it, and it's just warning people going into those spaces that there are asbestos-containing materials in there? It, it's not necessarily saying, "Danger, don't go in here, because there's an asbestos hazard." It's just an informational sign saying there is asbestos material in there. And, you know, mostly it's for people who are going to go in there and do work, so they're careful not to disturb the asbestos.
So Brian, with that, with that, I, I think we have some of those in, in some of the mechanical areas where the heating elements are and stuff. So maybe pipes that are wrapped in some type of form of asbestos, that's why that notification is on the door, because that's become a, a real hot point for social media, you know, pictures have been taken and put up on social media that, "How can we put our kids in this building when there's signs on the door?" They, they don't understand the condition, so...
Right. Those are actually very good signs to have, so people don't accidentally disturb asbestos-containing materials. It's, it's good to let people know, you know, where they are, so they can avoid disturbing them.
Anyone else have any question? Yes, ma'am? What's your name, please?
Oh, my name is... My understanding of asbestos, it's a risk when it's air skies and it's hard, small infection, you know, so when you say you have to prioritize, you have to, you have to turn it off.
That, that's right. The asbestos fibers in a, in a floor tile would have to be released from the, the matrix it's bound in, and become airborne, in order for you, for it to be a hazard. So, yeah, it, it takes some work.
Same thing with ceiling tiles, and those other things that you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, ceiling tiles, obviously, ceiling tiles can be, because they're considered a friable material, they could become pulverized much easier than a floor tile. So there, it's a bit of a higher risk, and it's easier to, you know, make those fibers get released. But again, if they're in good condition, and they're not disturbed, it, you know, it is not a, it's not a hazard.
Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir?
I'm not sure what to direct this to, but...
All right, name, please?
My current...
Yeah?
The percentage of the ceiling tiles are asbestos at this point? Do we know?
Do we have, do we have a percentage here? Do we have any idea?
Just a couple of classrooms left, or is it still...
No, there's, there's still quite a few. Is that right, Ed?
Yeah, I'm sure. Um, I think the first floor, fourth floor, that was pretty much a day, practically one, you know...
2012, I think.
Uh, most of the upper classrooms, third floor, second floor, the underneath, also the heating buildings, well, the fourth floor, the first floor, I mean, they have the same pattern, and the corporate building, and the, um, compared to the newer tiles, so they try, when you put newer tiles in, obviously, they're different, so, so, you know, it's not...
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, um, personally, in contact, seeing as teacher or their students in much of where, you have some tiles, you have, and they're not comfortable with it, the condition, they're, they're... How are you... ....................................
So the requirement for the inspections, as I said, every three years, they have to, we have to do a re-inspection. Every six months, AHIRA requires periodic surveillance. We haven't discussed yet who, we haven't gotten to that six-month period yet, so we haven't discussed who that's going to be, whether that's, whether we're going to do that, or the school's going to take on that responsibility. So it's every, every six months, the materials have to be inspected, is the, is the short answer.
And you've done that inspection for us?
We've done the three-year re-inspection, yeah, yeah. And, you know, both, both the three-year re-inspection and the six-month surveillance inspections have to be documented in the, the public information.
Yes. Could you just speak up a little bit, please?
So you did a three-year inspection, and it's just in the areas that were complained about, or in the whole building?
It was the whole building.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else have a question? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm, it's a follow-up to first. I, I'd like to ask, is the point of contact with students, and there's questions for asking, do they?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
I was just, I didn't hear answer her question. Who is the point of contact for students who might worry about, do they see someone manage to do it?
Administration.
The administration. We go to the principal or vice-principal, and we get reported over to the comptroller. Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir.
Somebody misunderstood, where I, you said we're going to go 10 and 15, why was there five again?
So, I can address that. So, when I got here about a year ago, we got a visit from the state, Janet McKenna, who enforces the AHRAs regulations, and she was asking to see our three-year reinspection that was due in 2013. Because of the turmoil in the district and the turnover personnel, that reinspection had never been done. So, once we were notified of that, we worked with Janet over the summer and then contacted Brian's company. And I, Brian, I believe you, you did the inspection back in 2010, and then, you know, it was, it was the district's responsibility to have that done in 2013, and it just wasn't done. So, once we were made aware of that, we contacted them and they came in. And because it had been six years or five years since the last one, I think they decided that the best route of action was to do a complete inspection of the whole building because it had been so long.
And the issue that Mr. Suter just addressed is something that took place before any member sitting at this table was on the, on the committee. Like many of the other things that we're being confronted with in the district, we're being responsible and trying to correct the sins of the past five to 10 years that haven't been addressed. And so, it has fallen on our plate in the past year or so. But no one sitting at this table tonight was here responsible for those, those, that work happened to be completed. Anyone else have a question or? Are you sure this is the only, this will be the only opportunity? Yes, sir.
Between now and when they actually, the tiles actually do get changed? The custodial staff or maintenance staff, are they allowed to go change there? That's a tricky business, it's like, so what's the procedure now, when I have to do that? Do we have to call this company in or are you making this happen? Ask my gloves on, change the time?
The maintenance staff currently.
I know we have a roof leak, so, and I know that's going to be taken care of. Between now and then, this could happen again. So, what's, what's our protection for the kids now?
Maintenance staff.
What is the, what is the procedure?
The maintenance staff currently doesn't have the training to replace the ceiling tiles. So, as it stands right now, it would have to be an abatement company called in to, to clean it up.
And that's why these folks were called immediately when this happened, and I'm, I'm sure we will be, we'll be hiring a licensed company that will be replacing the tiles when that time comes.
Just out of curiosity now, you looking to do this in the fourth grade?
Yes.
Okay. So, between now and then, is it possible to get a couple of facilities, staff, members training? They know what kind of EPE to wear, just change these tiles, and that's what I'm hiring out, stuff, but.
Mm-hmm.
But, the reaction?
Okay. So.
It seems like a cheaper way to go.
Right. And, and that, that is our intention. Once we get the custodial staff at the high school, there's a 16-hour training that they can take, and then they can, then they're, they have the ability to change one ceiling tile. But.
Senior agents, it's our.
Right.
Know there's a lot of.
Right. The, the issue we've had is that we've had a turnover in custodial staff. So, it's, you know, we just hired another custodian today. So, now that we have three full-time custodians at the high school, we'll make arrangements. ATC actually provides that 16-hour training. So, we'll get the three of them trained, and then we'll be able to address small problems like a single floor tile or ceiling tile ourselves and not have to call in an abatement company.
Yeah, it's a very good point.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have to, I just have to excuse myself.
Oh, I've, yeah, you've got another.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Is the, um, federal requirements for asbestos management in schools and law permits if the maintenance and custodial staff, who may or can go in, contains asbestos, they can, must receive two hours of asbestos away training.
That's correct.
Actually, Janet McKenna from the state actually provided the two-hour training in July, and I actually sat in on that as well. But since July, the, the custodians that took that training are no longer working for us. So, we've got to do that again for the new crew and get them the 16-hour training. Right.
Anyone else, last call. All right, well, Brian, we, we certainly thank you for coming out and giving us the explanations and putting us at ease. Hopefully, many of the parents and staff will see this as it's re-televized at home. And just as a reminder to those of you that are here and may watch us at home, there will be another hearing such as this to address the air quality throughout the whole building at David Proudy, and that will be presented, and we'll get that in the newspaper, and we'll do the same thing with some type of a call to all the homes so that everybody will be aware of it and be able to come and ask whatever questions you have at that time. Thank you for coming tonight to listen, and thanks for the, for the report. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
motion by Heather Second.
Second.
Seconded by Benny, others in favor?
Aye.
Also voted.